...regular board meeting to order, could I get a vote call please?
Deb Brady.
Yeah.
John Church here.
Here.
Marian Thwier.
Here.
Bob Eifinger.
Here.
Lisa Cabaluna.
Here.
Kevin LaColan.
Here.
Diane Salters here, Dr. Outlaw.
Here.
Jan Mead.
Here.
And Ashley Fuleo, that's not.
Savannah and Zoe.
Okay Savannah and.
Zoe.
Zoe, okay, they're all here.
Awesome, so everybody please rise from the podium please.
...the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, infinite and just as we are.
Okay, next up is our Brandon High School student report, and tonight we have Zoe Harris and Savannah, welcome.
Hi, I'm Zoe and this is Savannah, so we just have a few updates from our school, we just recently had our charity week, and we did part of it for the Humane Society and part of it to go towards a memorial for Deputy Overall. We raised about a thousand dollars to go towards the memorial and and the last number that I remember for the Humane Society was around two thousand dollars, so that went down very nicely.
Um, we have a couple ideas for the overall memorial, um, we're gonna put a decal up in the cafeteria of where it used to stand, it's gonna say never quit. And then we're also gonna make one of the photos that's made out of photos, a picture of him with everybody from the past couple years yearbook photos. And then we are getting a plaque like etched with his, like a picture of him on it. And also I believe we're planting a tree outside the school, we have a particular location.
Um, as for winter sports right now, we have basketball going on, girls and boys, bowling, girls and boys, competitive palms, competitive cheer and quiz bowl.
And then right now in student council, we have a holiday spirit week going on, today was PJ day slash Lindsay day. Tomorrow is red slash white candy cane day, um, Thursday or Wednesday is sock slash Santa hat day. And then Thursday is August other day. That's all we have.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate you guys coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin, I'm gonna pass it off to the fellow here who's gonna talk about Deputy Overall.
Is there anyone here from Deputy Overall's athletic group? Well, the Board of Education put together a plaque here for Deputy Eric Overall. Um, what it says is always a black line, appreciation of his dedication and service as a police liaison officer in the Brandon School District. We're privileged to have known Deputy Overall, we will be forever grateful for his outstanding contributions to our district and the community. Memories of him, memories of him will live on forever in the hallways of Brandon Schools, end of watch, eleven twenty-three seventeen. Many of us up here had the pleasure of knowing Deputy Overall, and I know there's a lot of things that have been said about him in the paper and otherwise, and they've all been positive. From my perspective here, he was a good man, he did very good at his job, he was a very caring person, he always wanted to help everybody. Uh, it was, it was a pleasure knowing him, and he definitely did service for our district, and we're all very sorry to see him go, so in his honor, we've had this memorial made, and we will hang that in the school, where exactly are you gonna put it, do you know?
Uh, we're still working on it, but it would be at the high school.
So, in memory of Deputy Overall.
Very much. Second thing for tonight, um, last spring, um, we launched a new endeavor here for the district, talking about our pool and how our pool was running. And it's been great, we are gonna get our first report from our folks from Aquaplex who have been managing our pool facilities. It's been great to see our pool filled with students, a lot of light, a lot of activity there, and Lindsey, and Lindsay, you guys good?
Good evening, and I think you guys all remember me, and this is Lindsey, she's the manager of the Brandon facility. And she's the person at the pool every single day, and I'm there, and not every day, but I'm at your pool, at your facility on a weekly basis. This morning, for example, we were there at six in the morning, both of us together. I think this slide, and we were very quick, we have four slides and we'll be out there, it's very exciting. And when we first came into your aquatic facility, it was very open and very unscheduled and and we didn't see many faces in the pool, now you see all these pictures, this is from your facility, this is from your aquatic center. We have kids, we have adults, we have swim lessons, we give everything from two months old to adults. And we kept the previous program and we also have new things that are coming up and swim lessons, so we have a very structured program. And it's going, it's going pretty well, and nothing is perfect, there's always a learning curve and we're learning how to deal with the community and how to deal with our facility, but overall it's very successful. And we have five facilities around Michigan, we have one facility in Florida. And Lindsey is the youngest manager that we have, and she actually has done unbelievably amazing. She also got a promotion today, and because I've seen so much growth, and it's very nice to see that from a young person, so and I appreciate what she does and she knows that, but I think also coming from Brandon, you need to know you have a superstar person and dealing with your aquatics, and again, there is learning, there are things that we are constantly learning how to deal with, but overall I think pictures say it all, and besides just talking, so really quick, before before we came, there were about twenty-five, thirty registered open swim members, and it was just mostly adults that were swimming in the open swim. And there was no year-round programming, there was lower awareness of the aquatic center, there were no swim teams, so kids that are after high school swim season, there was not a real structured swim team at your aquatic center, and there was a change in schedule of programs. That's pretty much what we got when we came to Brandon Aquatics. Now, and when we are at Brandon Aquatics, we have fifty-plus registered open swim members, we gave about fifteen hundred swim lessons since May to, May is when we started until now, we believe we will be able to give about two and a half thousand in twenty eighteen. I always believe in underselling and over delivering, we think we'll be doing much better than that, but that's, that's a goal that we put for our facility in Brandon. And we had facility events, family fun nights, we had swim meets, we pretty much had an event every month. And that's given us the opportunity to really boost the awareness of the aquatics, we get new members in the facility, we get members from other facilities to find out that we have a swim program in Brandon, and the family fun nights have been growing, it's something very new to your community, so that's been doing very good for us, and we've been very involved in your high school program, so you know you have a high school swim team for girls and boys. And when we came, that was another struggle that the school had, and that's something that it wasn't for our business benefit, but it was for us, again, swimming is a community, we wanted to really invest into the community and help as much as we can and be involved as much as we can. We believe that the more we are involved in the community, obviously, the more we'll be able to grow the aquatics. And for example, our head coach of our entire program, that's my number one staff coach member, and he was leading and coaching your boy, your girl's high school season, and he's also involving the boys' high school season. Lindsey was involved in the, in both seasons, and she's in charge of your middle school program, so again, we're not only doing things for the after-school activities, we also do stuff that are very involved with your high school and the future of the kids in the school activities, and I think that, again, that's very important too. If we want a long-term future, if we want to grow the aquatics, and we have to be able to get involved and help and be part of the bigger picture, okay? Future plans, and we are building something very unique that not too many schools in the country are doing. Now for you, Jen, Matt and I, and together with Lindsey, we've been setting up about a sixth grade program to try and and offer swim lessons to kids in your school and that are in sixth grade. And it's a very known program from Europe, and you're offering it in a very low cost, instead of a twenty dollar per lesson, it's three to five dollars per lesson, the kids come right after school to the swimming pool, and they have a whole program built with a swim lesson, another hour, they can do homework on the pool side and then the parents come take them out, it's helping the parents, it's financially helping the parents, and it's giving them the opportunity to get swim lessons for a very, very minimal cost, and it's working together with with the school, so it's something that we are building, and most likely it will happen in the next year, but it's very exciting, I know in Europe it's doing miracles, and I'll give you one statistics of why we're doing it, and there are ten jumpings that there in the U.S., okay? Most of them, kids sixth grade and under, okay, so that's why in Europe they are attacking it and they're working together with the schools, and it's something that we brought up and we've been communicating, and we even met with the middle school principal, which is here. So I'm very excited about that because I think it's gonna give the Brandon community something that not too many communities in the town actually can say they do that. And family nights, we have pretty much every month, like I said, so we have three coming up. And during the summer, we will have summer camps, and there were no summer camps this year, so that's something we're already planning. I know it's winter, we just got the first snow, but we are planning for summer camps, and really our next step is start reaching out more to the community, we want to constantly boost that awareness, I met with Matt and Jen earlier this week. And we are really interested in getting involved in any open door that you have, to local groups, churches, anything that you can help us reach to the community, we've been putting flyers in grocery stores and coffee shops and diners, if you have an open door that you can help us reach more parents and get more people in the pool, and you can always email us and make sure that our contact information is shared with you as well, so and that's it pretty much for us, if you have any questions, again, I'll finish with every time we start a new facility, there is, there is a learning curve and there is a lot that we're learning about swimming, about ourselves and about the community. And this progress here in Brandon has been incredible, and when I first brought Lindsey into our staff, we have about thirty-three staff members, and some of the full-time members were questioning, you're bringing in a very young person, and for me it was, I saw the fire that Lindsey had, she's very engaged, and she took on challenges that many kids, so I'm calling you a kid, but many people wouldn't take it, and she's been dealing amazing with your members, with the open swim members, which I know it was a tough community to crack into and with a very big transition when we first got in here, but when I come every time to the pool, I come two, three times a week, I don't stop, like, it never stopped getting and good feedback from your community about Lindsey, so a lot of what we accomplished is due to having her. And I'm leaving tomorrow morning to Florida and today was, and she got a promotion, and again, she's very, very involved, if you have any ideas of how we can reach more people in the community, we're more than interested to hear.
You skipped over the Taylor story, can you talk about that?
Yes, actually towards the last sentence, I didn't see that. And we, part of our program being in five different facilities here in Michigan, we have hundreds of families part of our program. We have a homeschool swimmer that swam with our program, Aquaplex, in Oak School. This year she actually enrolled here in your school, because our coaches were involved in the high school team, she was the number one swimmer at the high school team. And she led by example, she made the state championships, she made the finals at state championships, and that's another, thank you for pointing that out, that was another way of showing how rich that we have with our other facilities and how our families are very loyal to the program. They want to stick around, they see the year-round program that we do, and I think that benefited the schooling in a way that, you know, sometimes you don't even expect, but that was very nice to see, a swimmer follow us, because she was already enrolled in a different school this year. And she dropped out, she came here to train with the coaches, which was very nice for me to see, and the coaches was very, was very proud to come to me and say, you know she's coming to Brandon, I'm like, yeah, that's awesome, so that's probably the strawberry and the cream mix set, I think, for this twenty-seventeen, and hopefully we'll have more in twenty-eighteen.
Well, you talk about, you know, learning and growing, certainly for us, it happens all the time, so
In the other side.
I don't expect any different from, for you, when you get involved as well, but it sounded like everything's going very, very well.
Not everything.
Congratulations Lindsey, it sounded like you've done very well.
Not everything, most of everything, but.
I think a lot of things that, from the past to now anyway, there's some consistency factors I think that were, were really important to us. And it sounds like with the program as you put it in place, there's a lot of consistency and people know, know at least what to expect and how it's gonna be done, and I think that's, that's a good sign, so if the program continues, to me it sounds like you're going in the right direction.
Yeah, we're excited for twenty-eighteen, so.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'll finish again, I'll repeat it for the third time, if you have any open doors, I have a host, she's running really fast, she wants open doors. She comes to me daily, I mean, where can I go, what can I do, she wants direction, so if you have any local groups, churches, we'd be more than happy to go and boost their, okay, so I'll make sure that we share our email contact.
Yes, thank you very much.
I just have one final question, Lindsey, if you might ask me a question, what do you see as your biggest challenges going forward?
My biggest challenge? To get more people in the pool, 'cause I know like, it's very, I used to work at West Bloomfield High School where, you know, city life, it was very busy, and now I'm coming out here where I used to attend Camp Timberac, so it's very different out here versus West Bloomfield, so mine is just kinda like opening up to the community, and actually I just went like downtown and like I never seen that there. So I was like, wow, I was like, I didn't even know this was here, and I started driving around, and I was like, oh! So it was very exciting, I was like, wow, new things, and so I was like, okay, I can go there, I can go there, I can go there, so.
So kind of you're rising yourself.
Yeah, yeah, just kind of rising where I can go, who I can ask, and just trying to figure things out, so, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, do we have any public comments or questions on our agenda business that I might like to address the board?
It's gonna be pretty hard following him with a microphone and everything. Very hard. Um, I'm Barry Bass from BLB, I just wanted to introduce you to myself and if you had any questions or anything about my proposal. The only thing I see different that I didn't hear anybody mention was, I've been up here in anybody who pays taxes here, thirty-five years, had three businesses here in Orangeville, pay almost, I think, fifty thousand a year in tax, property taxes, which I think ten to fifteen thousand a year goes to the schools, and so I want you to see that in the long term too, that a lot of money goes to other, too, not that I'm not a nonprofit, I have nothing against the church at all, they're both great ideas for what what we wanna do, it's, I think that they're pretty similar, I haven't actually seen all theirs, but so that's the biggest point, is plus purchasing it with a business, by the time you put another five hundred to a million into it, which it'll need, you know, I wanna put a road in, going out to M-50, a separate road, and a lot of stuff, but that's on the tax roll too, you know, the upgrades and all that stuff, so the five percent interest or whatever, it really doesn't add up for the taxes for fifty years that go to the whole township of the county goes for the cause basically, and there's no, I know there's, people ask about the charter schools and all that stuff, wanting to put rooms in and all that, I have no, I think, did Ali get my letter originally? I grew up in Waterford, my wife graduated from Brandon, she actually graduated from that school back when it was a high school. And when Waterford sold, they had thirty schools for sale, and they sold them for a dollar to the churches, which again, nothing against the churches, but half of them went, put charter schools in, so you go right back against yourself, you know? So I just, I'm not for the charter schools, I just wanted to put that up on record, so. If, I don't know if any of you got any questions, or now's the time, or wait till next?
Do a thirty second, 'cause we, yes, we got your letter, but you know, there's people here now, do a thirty second vision.
Basically, I have three kids in high school, been, I've done sports and all that all my life, but we know the schools don't have the money to do everything that we wanna do for our kids, so basically everything's a travel team, everybody's got a kid on a travel team or a grandkid or something on a travel team. So you're either going to Clio, you're going to Oxford, you're going to Auburn Hills, you're going all over the place, basically every other day for training, even if your kid's good or not that good, you're, it's fun, you know, and that's the whole point. It's not, probably gonna be similar to the Oxford thing, but I think everybody's been to the Oxford thing on twenty-four there, not gonna compete with them if you ever go there, they're packed every day, too. I'm just sick of driving, you know, all over the state to take my kids places, and I can, I'm lucky enough to be able to do this. It's not gonna be a, you know, it's not gonna be the Palace or nothing, but it'll be pretty nice. I built, I just built the Homeland Security building over there on Grinch Hall, the blue building on Grinch Hall there, and you see that? That turned out pretty nice, and part of the off-road parks weren't in, from the inception and that, so I can get stuff done, I'm not a PowerPoint guy, but I've been here a long time, I can get stuff done, and not asking for any, out of your pocket for that, so.
What kind of remodel will you be looking for?
Probably, subject to the planning commission, what it, what it's gonna need, but it's gonna be I wanna have basketball, you know, the indoor soccer, footsole they call it, pretty much every kind of sport you could do and not to compete with the school, because you know, once the pool closes, again, you gotta take your kid at seven or eight o'clock at night to Auburn Hills, we all have done that, I'm sure, for soccer or something, and it'd be nice to have it right in our own neighborhood and that. And actually, if I work with, if there's stuff that you have ideas to the school for sports and that, those rooms are actually pretty big in there, I don't know if anybody, kids play baseball and that, but these simulators now, golf, baseball, pretty much everything, you don't need twenty-five foot ceilings to do everything. Most of the soccer training now, unless you go down to Auburn Hills and pay, you know, three hundred bucks, four hundred bucks an hour or whatever to rent, is done in closed, a lot of closed spaces, you know, in the like classroom size and that kind of stuff, so is the baseball too. There's plenty of room in there, and I figure it's gonna need at least the road alone, you're probably talking two, three hundred thousand dollars to put an entranceway in there, but what do you call it, lane, you know, decelerated, decelerated lanes and all that stuff, footsole, which will help out over here, we all sat at that light where three cars go through, you're sitting there all day long, so I'd like to put in, like outside stuff, a skating rink, you know, for the winter time, obviously, not for the summer. That would be more, I wanna have some public stuff there, you don't have to make every penny up, every, you know, you gotta have some give-back stuff too, for the community, so make it a really nice place.
So you go all over, how many people are we gonna attract from Oxford and?
Well, I think Oxford's.
How many Brandon kids go a lot?
A lot, all your soccer kids, all your soccer kids travel, I mean, we go to Travis, you go pretty much everywhere if you have travel. So I know we were on Brandon Soccer, yeah.
How many kids are gonna be using the facility? Each sport, I mean, you got your travel teams, but you gonna attract anybody else, we're going there, make them money, but how many are gonna come into our place?
Well, I, like I said, I've been doing it for a long time, and I've been involved in all the sports, I know what to make it, for the parents, the parking.
So you're gonna draw, you're gonna get Oxford and Hollywood?
I'm not gonna go after the whole world, 'cause it's not gonna be a, I'm not trying to make it a, you know, totally about the money part, so it's gonna be a nice place, I wanna, I like giving back, so that's, that's mainly, but I'm not a church, so I'm gonna pay the taxes, so, I think they basically got the same idea, but I don't know, I haven't seen their idea, but I've heard from people that have called me, so. Yeah, so would I. I said Oxford.
Well, Oxford speakers.
Huh? Yeah, I, yeah, I know I gotta go down the pistons four times a week, so. I used to do the work for the Palace there for twenty-five years too, so I've been around it.
So you think we got the connections to bring in what I call the coaches, the trainers, and hopes, that that's what?
I'll tell you a quick story, I have the big buildings up in Goodrich, by the post office there, and we had somebody come in and wanna put in a soccer, indoor soccer, they basically quit, started doing it, and you know, it fell, fell by the wayside. And then baseball, you know, the pitching and the batting stuff and everything, and that was two years ago. And I'm still getting calls from Lapeer and every other, every other school district, when's your thing gonna open? And it wasn't even me doing it, I, I said, you can, you know, use my building, you rented it, and I got permission from Atlas Township and Village there, and then he fell by the wayside, and like I said, I'm still getting calls two years later, so it doesn't matter if you put one in Lake Orion, the people are gonna come to it, because you know, right now it's winter time, and you're sitting home with your kids, and there's, there's gonna be activities for the little kids too, not just, not just your high school or junior high, or, so it's gonna be for everybody.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the board this evening? All right. We will move on with our agenda business, first thing we have is approval of our consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Vote that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I'll just mention once again, in case people didn't hear it before, we did add agenda item G, which is motion to close the bid process and authorize Dr. Outlaw to work with Plant, Wren and Cresta legal counsel, negotiate with two bidders report back to the board January fifteenth, so that has been added to the agenda as action item G. Okay, Jen, can I answer?
We have a couple items tonight, the first Craig Kaler is here, fifth third, you have the resolution in your packet to approve the refunding, we wanna start the process to refund our two thousand eight refunding bond, which originally was the voted bond in nineteen ninety-six. That bond will be paid off in two thousand twenty-six, and we have an opportunity to once again refund that bond and save significant interest dollars, somewhere around a million, depending on how the market is here in February. So it's a good opportunity, we did this two years ago with our school bond loans on end with our two thousand and six bond, so Craig is here to answer any questions, come on. Y'all know Craig.
Yes.
May I have an answer, any questions, Jen?
Why don't you just give us a quick overview, I think we all pretty much know the drill, but.
Okay, good, well, our plan right now is to start the process in early January, and then we intend to price your bonds in early February and close later in the month of February, we have to close within ninety days of the call date, which is May one. So, you know, the market has been very attractive lately, Jen and I were talking earlier, it's kind of counterintuitive, usually a stock market that's really blazing like it has been on the GAD for our market, but volume has been so low this year that our market is still quite stable, so we're still seeing historic level rates, which is great for you. So as Jen mentioned, right now the numbers show potentially up to a million dollars of savings, about nine percent present value, which is well above the target range that your financial advisor has recommended. And probably the biggest issue we're watching is what happens with tax reform, because tax reform could have an impact on our market, and we just don't know yet what that impact may be on the interest rates. Corporate taxes go down, bond yields go in the opposite direction. Not enough to make this a deal that we wouldn't do, that we're the sacred taxpayers still consider some of our.
But possibly less than the projected.
Yes.
So.
Again, we have no idea, you know.
I was going to ask you what you thought about it.
If I could define that, you know, if you're a mind in our businesses, I wouldn't be here right now.
That's why they have to.
Once again, this is zero profit in the district. So even if the savings were a million, they were eight hundred thousand, there's zero profit in the district. So it's all savings. It's just how much savings we would get.
Correct. You also have compounded because you do borrow from the school bond loan fund. So any interest that you're reducing on the refunding is going to have an impact on any borrowing you would incur in the future in your school bond loan fund. So that's a double benefit really for the refunding.
Okay. All right. So really, pretty much the same deal that we went through before.
Same drill, yes.
Your timing is February for Caponato.
Correct.
And based on what we see today, you see about a million, possibly tax reform could affect that. Other than that, you think it's?
You know, we'll see what volume is like early in the year, but right now the indications are that volume's probably going to be comparable to what we saw at the beginning of two thousand seventeen, which was pretty light. December thirty-first is a big settlement date in the municipal bond market, so usually there's a lot of investors with money to go to work. And so we usually see good market reactions in the first month of the year. So we'd expect that to be the same. There's still a good market out there to buy these bonds. There's an active marketplace out there, is actively seeking municipal bonds. You're a good credit. And that's a good, good news piece as well. Your financials have improved, that's a good news piece as well. So when you get out and starting to talk to grading agencies, they're going to look at that very closely. And hopefully that also helps by you picking up in your grading as well, which will benefit you further.
It's almost like the same team. Of course, Craig is our unregistered, Jess Holt will be our bond coordinator. He prepared the resolution, which you saw that. Craig and Jess will both be here in February meeting once we, when we actually go to approve the sale.
That's correct.
In February. So and then of course, Sarah and Josh are connecting with the funding official. So everybody, the same team.
Same team. Okay. All right, any questions, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir.
Before I'm working with you.
Okay, before I start the budget amendment, I just got to put in my notes. I don't know if you saw the Saturday, they went and serviced in the Saturday, so just in case you didn't see, I thought I'd bring them in on the audience. So we're really excited. We added some, we're working with the students, Brian Morris class, to do some of the graphics. We added some PR, so PR is publishing, if you do sixteen, you have to do sixteen or twenty-four, so we had like eighteen pages or we had six, so we could advertise some things from the district. And we have additional classes, so things have been launched. Just wanted to bring you up, new brochure. Am I too loud?
You're great.
Okay. All right, tonight I'm going to present our budget amendment. This one is really the, we do one in June, we have a lot of projections and we're not really sure. So this one, to me, is like the real deal for the year, and so I can present exactly where we're at and where we think we're going to finish the year. The resolution tonight is to approve the general fund amendment as well as our childcare fund and our food service fund. Just some budget summary points. We did receive a hundred and twenty dollar per student increase. Our audited enrollment decline was one twenty-seven. Probably remember, we projected a hundred and fifty declines, so we were twenty-three better than that. Our retirement cost did go up slightly this year to twenty-five point five six percent. We were able to, when all was said and done, reduce five FTE. I think originally we had a little bit more, but kids, just the way they pan out in the preschool and fourth grade or whatever, we, we were down five FTE. This current budget has two hundred thousand dollars of capital outlay, that's separate the assigned fund balance. We reduced that slightly. Of course, our debt levy is twelve point one six mils on all property, and our operating non-homestead levy is at seventeen point eight seven zero six mils. I wanted to update you, this has been a discussion point, our capital projects. Right now, John's working hard to complete all these projects. The wastewater treatment plant, RFP, is in process. We're hoping to re, release the bid in February, mid-February, for work to be completed next summer, two thousand eighteen. The high school lift pump project is scheduled for spring break two thousand eighteen installation. That's on the agenda for approval tonight. I did go out to bid, and John is recommending a contractor for that. The safety rail project, the bid is currently has been released, so as soon as that vendor is picked, you'll be approving that contract. The generator move, something we want to do, we're having a hard time finding a vendor to get quotes on that. As soon as we get a quote, we would like to move the generator from Fletcher to Harbor Swanson. And then, this was a new one, the high school heat exchanger, went, one of them went bad, so we're getting quotes. It's under the bid limit, we believe, so we're getting three quotes. No effect to the heat, though, John, but everything is running fine, we just need to replace that. So those are the projects that we are working on currently from our general fund budget. Oh, it's small. Make that bigger. Okay, got it. What's that?
It's good, you're just looking from a long way.
Okay, okay. So the revenue analysis is what I did here, and I do have copies of the presentation, if anyone's interested, I can send it to you. Our revenue, basically, we're, I've looked at last year's audited numbers and then this year's budget, this current budget tonight. We have these several categories of revenue. Our operating mileage basically going to stay the same. If you look to the far right, the increase-decrease, that's probably the best way to look at the, at the comparison. Our athletics, roughly the same. Our state revenue is down about two hundred and fifty thousand, but on the bottom, I always wanted to, want to talk about the stabilization funding, because it throws off our real decrease in state revenue. We get MIFs or state stabilization money, basically money comes in and then it's expensed, so it's a net wash to the fund balance. Last year we had a million four, this year we have a million seven. So in that state decline of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, about two hundred and thirty thousand is MIFs money. So our real decline is about five hundred thousand, is what I'm trying to get to for the state. Federal grants, roughly the same. PA eighteen, that's our county special ed mileage money that we get, as well as the Medicaid money. We took a big hit this year in that department, hundred and sixty thousand, which also we took a double whammy, I talked about in the minute, where our special ed costs have increased significantly. So we got less revenue and the costs have gone up. Mislania stayed about the same, that's E-RAY transportation revenue they get. And then the last one I want to point out, our transfers and our bus capital lease, that's the food service, our food service program does very well. Last year we were able to, they were able to transfer sixty-two thousand nine seventy-five to the general fund. This year I have sixty-five thousand projected, plus that last line item, the way we have to account for our bus lease, hundred ninety-nine thousand five seventy-eight was the capital proceeds. So that's in revenue, but it's also in expense. So again, that's no increase to the fund balance. So the revenue gets bumped up a little bit because of the way we have to account for things, but some of these items, the expense also bumps up, so. Anyway, I just wanted to point out why there was such a big increase there. Any questions on revenue?
I'm assuming sixty-five is the most that we can take from the food service?
Yes. What it is, is we're allowed to do fifteen percent of our non-food costs, so once the budget's completed, I take out all the food costs and the capital outlay, we're not allowed to use that. And then the other items, salaries and whatever, we can take fifteen percent of that. So based on our expenditures, it's right about sixty-five. Okay. Expenditures, again, I've used this presentation many times, I just go through, this is by function, which is instruction, support, business, whatever. We've got our final budget last year compared to this year. I think it's, I must, I'll just do the variance. So if we look at our instruction, our instructional costs are up about five hundred and forty-eight thousand. That is due to the increase in our bargaining agreements. Our biggest one, our teachers, and that all of the, all of the groups in the district did receive an increase. And in that also is, again, that MIFs increase, that's part of, would be part of an instructional cost, so we have revenue for that. So the instructional cost would actually be a little bit less than the five hundred and forty-eight. Support, that's things like pupil services, counseling, that type of thing. Those costs are down somewhat. Our general business is up only because there was a position that used to report to Human Resources that now reports to our benefits person. We switched her around, so that's why the costs are up there. Operations and maintenance, we have a reduction because I did reduce the capital outlay a hundred thousand. Hopefully we can stick with that one. Transportation is up. Again, that has to do with the bus purchase. We have the revenue of the one ninety-nine. We also have the one ninety-nine in the transportation in and out, it's just the way we have to record it. The actual payments are down in debt service. Central services, HR, and we're up a little bit in technology, which is part of central services because of our E-RAY project this year. Athletics, about the same. Debt service, again, the debt service increase of thirty-one thousand is because we had added two new buses this year, so the thirty-one thousand is the cost of those new buses. And then payments to other public schools, that one is our cost for our center program. I added about a hundred thousand. Again, we don't know what's going to happen over the summer. We have a couple students who came in that were, well, they were here, but they require now to go to a center program, and it's going to cost the district a hundred thousand dollars. It's just, I know, there's not much we can do about it. So that was the hundred thousand dollar increase. That was what I was talking about earlier. Our PA eighteen money went down a hundred and sixty, and now we have a hundred thousand dollars more in cost, so hopefully next year we'll get some of that back. Community service is up, but the revenue from community service is up as well. I just like the money that we're getting from our classes or whatever, that's in the revenue side of things. The expense part of it, because we have to turn around, we have to pay our vendors from these classes. So the bottom line is still better than it was. There's voice up here. Operating transfers out, this is really great news. Our preschool academy program, last year we transferred a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one thirty-six, and Diane has worked really hard, rearranged things, and was able to eliminate that transfer. Right now we have a balanced budget, so that's really good news. It's the way that we, we have more kids full day, full days instead of kind of a partial schedule, so we have more kids committed more days. And we did that, there was no increase this year either. So that's good news. So bottom line is, our expenditures are up this year for some of the reasons I talked about earlier, and, excuse me, I should have brought my water. Any questions on those?
So your variance at the end is one point eight percent.
Correct. Yep. Okay. And then, thank you, children. Just real quick, wanted to do it this way. Like I said, this is, to me, is the, this is more, we had more information out than we did in June, so I'd like to make sure I go through it. Salaries are down a little bit. Benefits are up mostly because of the UAAL. Purchased, salaries are down because we were able to eliminate positions due to the restructuring. Purchase services about the same, materials about the same, capital outlay is up, again for the reasons we've been discussing, that has to do with the bus leases and the way we account for that and others. So again, looking at it from this viewpoint, the one point eight percent increase. Okay, so the bottom line, our operating surplus last year, the audited number, we finished the year with six hundred and forty-eight thousand nine eighteen, was a really strong year. This budget that I am presenting to you tonight, we're looking at a projected operating surplus of twenty-three thousand nine ten, which is still, actually, I have to say, it's really a miracle if you, I mean, we lost a hundred and twenty-seven kids, five percent of our student money. We were able to give nice increases to the teachers and everybody else, and still we have a balanced budget. So I think that's pretty good, we were able to do that really good. So our audited fund balance last year, we ended the year at just a little over three point nine million, or fifteen point six percent. Looking at, again, just a little bit more, fifteen point two five percent, very healthy fund balance. Our current assigned fund balance, per the board's direction, is two million dollars. So our unassigned fund balance, those are the numbers, ten point four three last year, and it's going down a little bit because we did not have, our assigned fund balance last year was one point two, so we upped that this year to two million. That's why it went from ten point four three to seven point four eight. Any questions on our fund balance projections?
No, it's whatever we want to be.
Okay, yep. Childcare, just real quick, a couple more slides. As I mentioned, our preschool academy is doing very well. We have fifty-three full-day students and forty-one half-day students. The transfer from general fund is zero. That's a decrease from a hundred and thirty-four thousand. That's a huge, huge, huge budget savings for us. I talked to Diane, ninety-two percent of our kids last year are students in our preschool academy program. They are currently attending kindergarten or pre-K this year, which is really good. That was the goal, to keep our students, get them, so the preschool is attracting students and we're keeping students. And I think you're all aware, it was voted the best of the best in the area, so. Preschool is a really, it's doing really well. It's a big improvement to the district and a great program. Last thing is our food service. We did not increase lunch prices. We have our spend-down plan, I think, if you remember when the auditors were here, we have too much money in our food service fund. So we upped some things this year. We have to spend sixty-six thousand, so meeting Suzanne in the morning, we've been back and forth, but she's got her list of things she's going to do. I think we're going to do some renovations and buy some equipment and higher-quality food, so there's now like better lettuce and more fruits and, you know, so no more, yeah, so romaine lettuce and, anyway, so that's a good, good thing for the kids. They enjoy that. I think she's in the process of buying a frozen yogurt machine, which will be really fun. Yeah, so we love food service. It's like a good problem. Suzanne runs a really big ship over there. Transfers to general funds, we talked about sixty-five thousand, and they still, after all that, projecting an ending fund balance of three hundred and sixteen thousand or so for our food service fund, so it's always, it's always done well. That's all I have, I just, one more point I was going to mention in the session, the study session. Our fund balance projection in June was at five hundred and thirty-six thousand or so for the year. We have twenty-three better students, so that would be maybe about a seven hundred thousand then, but we gave out the increases, you gave out the increases, and our special ed costs did go up, what I talked about. So we're right on where we thought we were going to be in June, so no surprises there. Does anyone have a question?
Good job.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Celeste.
Thank you. Okay, educational report, Debbie Brower?
This year we implemented Project Lead the Way in our two elementaries, grades case of five. And tonight, Randy Bevel, our Project Lead the Way teacher, is going to share highlights and updates about how it's going with Project Lead the Way for our elementary this year.
So Project Lead the Way is a STEM-based curriculum. It's science, technology, engineering, and math, and it's all hands-on, and it follows our next-generation science standards, which is the science curriculum for the students. PLTW is important because it's aligned with our science expectations. Students follow a design process, so they ask, explore, model, evaluate, and explain. They do that at all grade levels. Students work in small groups, small teams, there's a lot of- Students work in small groups, small teams, there's a lot of partnerships, there's so much problem solving that has to happen from junior kindergarten through fifth grade. So an example lesson that I'm doing right now for second-grade students is, it's with energy conversion, that's what the curriculum is. And each lesson presents the learning targets right off the bat, so that's something I communicate with the students right away, they know what the learning targets are. I check in with them, they do an activity, and they build upon one another. And so, for example, second graders are learning about energy conversion, so the problem that they were given, because engineers solve problems, that's what Project Lead the Way is all about. So Suzie is in second grade, and she's going to her soccer game, and she brought, we call them ice pops, and she forgot a cooler, so she needs something to keep them cold for an hour. So the students have been learning about heat conduction, materials that work well for insulators, how to cool, how to change the states of manner. And now, they're in the design process, so they've explored, and they were able to sketch last week of what they want to create to solve this problem. I'm going to give them an ice pop, and they have to keep it cold for 60 minutes. And they're doing this with a partner. They are so, so excited to see their sketches, but not only that, they're so, they're thrilled to be able to build. So they're building, and they can't wait until the evaluate stage. So then, we'll see, does it work, does it not work? That's okay if it doesn't work, but give evidence why, so that comes in the explain stuff. And at PLTW enhances learning for students because it's all hands-on, students are engaged, they love coming to Project Lead the Way. There's a lot of self-reflection that's happening throughout Project Lead the Way, and it's just a quick check-in with students, and it's actually aligned with our report cards. So if you're a four, you're exceeding expectations; three, you meet; two, you're working towards the expectation; and a one, I'm worried about you. So it's just a quick, show me what you are right now for listening. Okay, show me what you are right now for learning. And they hold up four, three, two, or one. And it's a great way for them to be accountable for what's happening in PLTW, but for me to really be able to check in with learners. And actually, I don't, I haven't had any behavior problems in all of these classes, and I've had junior kindergarten through fifth grade in both buildings. So STEM Club, what I love about STEM Club, so it's an enrichment opportunity offered to students that doesn't interfere with instructional time. So it's during the recess time, students are signing up to come to STEM Club. And I was really excited last week. In third grade, we learned about science applied, and they applied, students from, that have that for PLTW, applied it to STEM Club. So they're applying their knowledge that they're learning during PLTW to what we're doing in STEM Club. It's an enrichment opportunity, and that's aligned with the vision of Brandon 2025. It's during non-instructional time, small groups, a lot of partnerships, team building, and I'm also including a writing component, because just looking at some data, we realized that kids really need to be able to write about their statements, giving evidence. And I'm also working closely with Oakland Schools. There's Laura Cummings has been, she has this great program, so we can borrow materials and supplies from Oakland Schools. Right now, we have kettle planks. She's reading dash and dots on Wednesday, and she's going to meet, she's meeting with myself and Bob Larson and a group of fifth-grade students for STEM, STEM Club, and she's going to train us on how to use them. And I'm really excited to have this opportunity. In May, we're going to get a 3D printer, so students can participate in the design process and then create something and see their creation really come to life. So fifth graders built this, and they had the challenge to move the blocks from one side to the other in two minutes. And there's a color sensor on it, so if they were to hit red, they had to pick up their, Dr. Outlaw actually got to come and observe that fast. So that's, that's PLTW. Does anyone have any questions about the program or?
Looks like fun.
It's a lot of fun.
Are you having fun?
I love it.
That's good.
It's, it's, still, it's a lot of learning for me, but it's been fabulous. We're thinking about our vision for next year, too.
It was interesting in the video, it almost looked like everybody was totally engaged, which is really.
Absolutely. And that's what I love. They're excited about learning, they're excited about PLTW, they're all engaged, they're reflecting on their learning, they know what their learning targets are. It's pretty amazing.
Excellent.
One thing I will say is, it doesn't happen by accident. We can adopt a program, the implementation of it is the key, and Randy has done an absolutely amazing job, and she's been a visionary on it, she's had the energy, the way she works with kids, works with staff, she's really made this happen, and gave us like an incredible launch. So thank you, Randy, for everything you've done. Randy is actually, is actually a Brandon High school graduate as well, so, always work that out, so.
Axpert. No, I, it's Hebbel, so everyone confuses Bevel and Hebbel.
I thought you both were.
No.
Well, she went to Axpert, so.
No.
She's still doing an amazing job. She's still awesome, yeah, so.
I won't know.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
So as Debbie might come forward, last year, when we implemented Project Lead the Way for K-5, you know, we already have a STEM academy at the high school. We said a year later that we're going to come back with proposal for middle school. And tonight, they're going to give us a little snapshot of what their vision is, they've got a committee that's been working on this throughout the year. And then, we'd like to come back with board's approval to come back in January with a formal proposal for middle school STEM.
So what we want to share with you this evening is basically the highlights and basic information that should give you an idea of what we're thinking as far as STEM in the middle school. It began with a vision, and the vision basically is to offer STEM education to any sixth, seventh, or eighth grader. It's really important that they have that opportunity through an elective, with the idea that hopefully, they'll be exposed to something that they maybe didn't know that they would want to do and be inspired to continue that path maybe in the future. So it will be offered sixth, seventh, and eighth. Why STEM? You just saw some great reasons why, but basically, all K-5 and Brandon are participating in STEM. We have high school opportunity, and we thought, you know, this would definitely give us an opportunity to continue that K-12, and there's just, it just totally aligns with what's going on across the state. We did some research and a lot of looking into different opportunities and came up with wanting to implement Project Lead the Way, which is same program you just saw, five, K-5. This one would be called Project Lead the Way Gateway, and it fits in with sixth, eighth. And it is a complete program or curriculum. It has everything you need, durable materials, ongoing professional development, a solution center that I can tell you 100% is available all the time to help you out. Between me and Bevel, we pretty much help them constantly this year. And it's just really a complete opportunity to start a foundation for STEM in the middle school. And our recommendation is to, next year, start with Project Lead the Way 1 and 2, and that would mean that it would be one semester, one, and that would be offered to any sixth, seventh, and eighth, with eighth graders getting first priority because they would be leaving. So we want them to have the opportunity to experience this before they leave middle school. And it would be two units a semester, and then the second semester would be Project Lead the Way 2, once again, offered to sixth, seventh, and eighth, and eighth graders getting first priority. And we're thinking up to five sections, we don't know, we're pretty hopeful, and based on feedback that we've received from elementary parents and students, it seems like it's going to be a pretty desirable elective for students, we think. And then, the following year, next, 2019, 2020, we would want to implement STEM 3 or Project Lead the Way 3, and the thinking is, whomever is teaching this course is going to need to be professionally developed this summer and fall. And, and we'll have to have those four courses under their belt, so we are going to make sure that they can do that and feel successful and be prepared. So then, the following year, we would add the other two courses and STEM 3. So the proposed budget is the cost of all the materials, and that would be enough to all the durable materials that we need to keep going. That number is approximately 22,000. And then, technology, I've done a lot of extensive research and conversations with our tech department and Project Lead the Way, and then ensure that our computers, currently, can handle all of the software, they just might run a little slower. So we would, I talked to Thomas in the tech department, he said possibly up to $100 upgrade for 30 computers, so that number's 3,000. The professional learning, that would be over the course of two years, for a total cost for six units of about $11,000. And then, we have an annual participation fee, 750. So overall, we're looking at approximately $37,000. And that would be sufficient for starting up and implementing Project Lead the Way STEM education at the middle school.
Who does a $700 get paid to?
Project Lead the Way. So that is what we'd like you to take a look at and come back in January and have an official vote on it. And we want, if you have any questions right now, we can certainly answer them, but we wanted to give you a highlight.
Well, you talked about Project Lead the Way 1, then 2, and then adding 3. How many different staff members are you going to have to have trained to cover all that?
We are not going to have, we would use the current staff number, so it would just be reallocating teachers for electives and Mr. Tucker.
I can talk to Hall about this, but it's the same pool.
Right, so I think your question, Kevin, is how many teachers will be trained? Is that what your question was?
Sure.
Okay. So we're thinking right now, having for next year, have one person trained in 1 and 2, and then we'll see how it goes, and train that person in 3, and then maybe take, train another teacher. That would give us flexibility in our schedule, gives a lot of teachers opportunities to teach this elective. I don't like scheduling, having one person just only be training this one class, and they're kind of bogged down, and they're cemented in the schedule, and our flexibility then is limited. So for next year, just one person, possibly two in 19 and 20, with the addition of that STEM or Project Lead the Way 3.
What's important to note is that there is no increase in the number of teachers that we have working for the various school districts. If students would be choosing this class because it's an elective, so there's no additional staff.
I was really looking more at the training cost, because I kind of read it, that it talked about one, so.
For next year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then, it depends how intensive the training gets, if the person wants to continue, someone else wants to get on board.
So we'll probably have to train this summer, probably train next summer.
We'll definitely be training for during.
This summer.
For sure.
Don't you think you should train one more in case someone gets sick or something?
That's kind of what I saw, putting all our eggs in one basket, you don't like to have one teacher just trained in all three.
Right.
So that's why we're trying to diversify a little bit, have multiple people.
And once you have access to the units, certainly, people can share that information and grow capacity. I can check on middle school, but I know for certain, the launch, K-5, I'm, I'm trained as a lead teacher, and I can train other people, and that is the plan as far as elementary. I'm assuming that some sort of model like that could have perv middle school.
I guess just make sure you've got enough money in your training budget to do what you need to do.
We will.
Good. Anything else?
Good. So we'll be excited back in January with a formal proposal.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I move on to our action items. Our first action item is approval of resolution of support for the school finance research collaborative.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolution of support, school finance research collaborative as presented.
Second. So the, there's a coalition of many different school districts and agencies connected with education across, across the entire state that's looking at school finance. They're doing a study. They've been working on this for two years, and it's going to be released in January. Oakland Schools has asked all school districts in the county to indicate that they support the efforts. Obviously, we've not seen the results of the report. This is to support their effort to look at school finance in the state of Michigan, to see if there are ways for us to fix and if there are any challenges. Ultimately, they're trying to determine what is the true cost of educating child. So that's what this is.
Okay. Any more discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the resolution of support? Please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item, approval of resolutions for general fund and school service fund amendments.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolutions for the general fund budget and school service fund amendment as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that item? Pretty much as it's presented by Jan or me. Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolutions for general fund, school service fund amendments, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of refunding bond resolution.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve 2018 refunding bond resolution as presented.
Okay. And we had a presentation on that this evening. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the refunding bond resolution, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. A word of contract for control panel duplex pump station. This is for the high school.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve contract with jet pump and LLL in the amount of $35,000, $67.17 for materials installation of the control panel duplex pump station with associated equipment at the high school as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this matter?
Jan, is there any comment on this aside? This is a thing, something we have to do. We talked about it with Project.
Yes, we did.
This was a little bit. We had three builders, this was a little bit, and they had all the requirements, so.
We were projecting 50,000 for Project, so this is.
This was John's recommendation, and I talked to him.
Okay. All those in favor of, all of the favor of awarding the contract for control panel duplex pump station, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. E, Superintendent Outlaw's contract.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve Dr. Outlaw's contract extension through the year 2022 and accept the compensation recommendations as presented.
Support.
Okay. This was derived out of the conversation that the board had earlier regarding Dr. Outlaw's evaluation. So I don't believe we have any further discussion on this matter. Yes, we, we added one additional year to the contract. We felt we took liberty to do so.
And not like the land contract, you can't withhold.
I hear the no vote. It's a no vote. Who supported that, I'm sorry?
I guess it is.
Okay. All those in favor of Dr. Outlaw's contract as stated, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, approves. Okay. The next is approval of Superintendent Outlaw's evaluation.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve Dr. Superintendent Outlaw's evaluation as presented.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, we have, we've been back. Yeah, we have, we've been back to meetings, and we've been here since five. But I don't even know Dr. Outlaw, we haven't had any chance to say. We did your evaluation. You got a 99% and highly effective. We need to thank you for the way you run this district. It's exactly the vision that we have always hoped for. We're very appreciative of, from the parents to the community, to the staff, and the vision that you're portraying and pushing us towards has just been great. We also really appreciate the team you've put together and the way you get them motivated. Last, that everything is about the education of our students. So, but we want to thank you. It is, Maria and I are gonna figure out how to get this to you, but it is done.
Thank you. I have to work here, and I have to work in school.
Shouldn't probably have these two items flipped.
Yeah.
Yeah, it became weird.
I didn't think about that at the time, so I didn't think that. Yeah. So, with all that being said, all those in, all those in favor of approving Superintendent Outlaw's evaluation? Please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, our last action item, G.
I can try it. I did write it out, I'll do this one if you want. Move to close the bid process and to authorize Dr. Outlaw to work with Plant, Moran, and Cresta to negotiate with these entities. In, oh, you're right. It pertaining to the bid process for Brandon Fletcher Building.
Say the potential sale of the Brandon Fletcher intermediate, the building.
Okay, for the sale. Do I do it then?
Go.
Okay. To negotiate with these entities regarding the sale process for the Fletcher Building.
I think that works. Get that all written down now?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to continue to write this, we got all of them.
Okay. We have the support for that. Okay. So, Diane has presented the motion. John has supported it. Do we have any further discussions? I know we discussed it relatively at length earlier. So, I think we understand what we're doing. And you do, too. Okay. Would you like to, have you got it all written out now?
I think I've written.
Would you please restate the motion, please?
Move to close the bid process and to authorize Dr. Outlaw to work with Plant, Moran, and Cresta to negotiate with those entities on the sale process of the Brandon Fletcher Building.
Okay, all those in favor of approving that motion? Please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Do you oppose? Okay. Okay, that concludes our action items. Do we have any citizens input this evening? Anyone like to address the board? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, President. My name is Wayne Wilson. I'm the president of the Village of Ordenville. I have a couple of questions regarding the Fletcher Building, and I have a couple of questions regarding the budget for Jan. We'll start with you, Jan. Budget amendment, on the expense side, you indicated that the benefits were up due to the UAL help. What is that?
Okay, the UAAAL.
Are you A-A-L?
Yeah, UAAAL. What that is, is a subsidy. The State of MDE, the State of Michigan, they give us, it's to help keep the retirement rate that we pay. So, for every dollar salary that we pay to an employee, we pay the State of Michigan 25 cents, 25.7 cents. That goes into the retirement, the pension fund, funds called retirement. So, that's a huge number. To keep that number lower, or it's sort of a gimmick. So, in our revenue, we're given a million seven from the state, and then we get an invoice every month, and we pay back the million seven. It's, it looks, it ups the amount that the state's giving us in the state revenue. I can't really, you know, the motivation to do that. I think originally, we were supposed to have a mixers rate of over 30% by now. So, it was, it was a way that they want to show that they're keeping that mixers rate low at 25%. It's an in and out, you know, that's not a great explanation. It has to do with the retirement fund and the way the state sends us money. So, they send us the money, and they send us an invoice. It doesn't affect our fund balance one time.
Secondly, what is the current balance owed to State of Michigan under school bond loan fund?
I have that, we, I'm going, I have to, I can get you the exact statement. I can print that off tomorrow, because I can print it off every month. I would, I think it's, it's under $10 million because we did refinance that. But we're set to borrow about $8 million this year. For the next five years, we're gonna borrow, and then we'll be in repayment.
So, with all the problems we had with Treasury back three years ago, or four years ago, this is being reduced because of our increased mileage that we were forced to pay?
Well, we refunded the school bond loan fund. We owed over $40 million. So, in 2015, we refunded that so that, so that we would save on interest. The compiling of interest every year was killing us. So, we refunded it at a lower rate. It allowed us to save on the interest on the school bond loan fund, which was a huge number. The increase to the debt levy, which is what I think you're asking about, that just allowed us to pay it off in time. The law says that we have to pay debt off by 2032. And the rate, the trajectory that we were on prior to the refunding and prior to increasing the debt levy, we were not gonna be anywhere near in compliance with paying that off in 2032. So, the state forced us to increase that. So, now we are in compliance. We will pay off the school bond loan fund in 2032. So, we're in compliance of the state law.
Thank you.
Okay.
With respect to the Fletcher Building, does the RFP reflect the removal of the generator from the building over to the Harvey Fletcher? What cost of that? I heard, I heard the discussion about the generator being removed or moved from Fletcher Building to the Harvey Swanson Building. Does the RFP reflect that so that the purchaser, whoever they are, is aware that there's not a generator there?
We'll check in there.
I mean, is that, did I hear that correct? Is that, is that what's?
You heard it correctly, and I had a similar question.
Okay, I will, I will check on, I will check.
Okay, when you're making your evaluation, the second question, it's more of a commentary. When you're making your projections and doing your evaluations with respect to the choice between the two purchasers of the Fletcher Building, I would, I would hope that you make a strong statement publicly as to the projected tax revenue that a profit, for-profit business would generate for both Brandon Township and for the Village of Ordenville, and also, obviously, for the school district. Because you're gonna be receiving a substantial amount of funds from the for-profit organization that you would not be receiving from a nonprofit organization, whoever they are. So, that, that I think is a, is a very, very important item. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, hearing and seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.